All right, it is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 25th, so we will officially call this meeting to order. Mr. Secretary, could you do roll call?
Yeah, I certainly can, thank you. As I call your name, please indicate your presence. Ballour?
Aye.
Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Feeny?
Here.
Mr. Cruiser?
Here.
Ms. Harlow?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
All present, all members present, we have a full board tonight.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Anybody notice any changes to these minutes? Okay, hearing none, that will pass on a consent agenda. And moving on, we don't have any old business, but I will go over kind of the flow of how this meeting will go. So just to be clear, before we get into our new business, what will happen with each of these is we will hear a statement of the case by the secretary, presentation of that case by the city staff, we will then open it up for the public hearing portion, followed by a presentation of the case by the appellant and questions from us, the board, testimony from any interested parties, rebuttal by the applicant, we will then close the public hearing, and then we will have discussion by the board. So after that public hearing is closed, the appellant and other interested parties are not allowed to address the board unless the chairperson makes a special exception to allow the appellant or interested parties to answer additional questions from us, the board. Just to kind of give you a rundown for what will happen here. And I will hand it back to you, Mr. Secretary.
All right, our first case for tonight, we have Jennifer and James Coyle, owners of 1418 North Wuthering Hills Drive, are requesting a variance from zoning ordinance section 42-362 per N1 in order to place a pre-built 336 square foot detached structure on the property. The code requires any detached building greater than 120 square feet to be compatible with the house. Exterior materials on the house are gray tone horizontal siding with gray asphalt shingles on the roof. The existing structure has almond vertical siding with slate corrugated metal roofing.
Thank you, Vicki Miller, Building Division. Exhibit A, Mr. and Mrs. Coyle's purchased their home in December of last year. The property is located on the southeast corner of North Wuthering Hills Drive and Prairie Fox Drive. The lot is a regular 80-foot wide by 110-foot depth, and all surrounding properties are zoned residential, as is this one. Still at their past residence is a 14-by-24 shed they would like to transport from Illinois to their Janesville home. The Coyle's visited the Building Division in June of this year and obtained a permit for the shed. During that review, staff indicated that the size of the structure requires two conditions. One, that the concrete floor with thickened edges must support the shed, and two, exterior materials must match the house. Sorry. And in the highlighted yellow of this exhibit C, a permit was issued with an agreement the siding would be painted gray to match the house, and the roofing would be changed out within six months. The concrete floor was being prepped on the site and an inspection was scheduled. Upon inspection, the floor wasn't quite ready, and it did fail. The inspector spoke with Mrs. Coyle on the site, and there was discussion about rescinding the permit and requesting a variance to allow the roofing to remain as is. The inspector left under the impression the project was not moving forward at that time. The Coyle's requested a refund for the permit, and they were reimbursed. Several months later, staff received this variance request to allow the roof to remain metal. Back to the first exhibit. The concrete slab was completed and is located on the northeast corner of the lot. Staff conveyed to the Coyle's reasons why we couldn't support their request. Staff applies this code across the city, and it wouldn't be fair to other property owners to make an exception here. As you are aware, the zoning ordinance is being rewritten, but there will not be a change to the compatibility regulation. We're going to keep that in place. Staff believe harmony among buildings on the same lot and within neighborhoods is important. Two of the Coyle's neighbors agree. Those letters weren't received until after that report was already written and distributed, so there is a copy of them in front of you, and during the public hearing, when you open the public hearing, Mr. Secretary over there will read those into the record. Staff is recommending denial of the request, establishing that the shed would not be compatible with the house, and based on the forefindings of fact outlined in the staff report. One, that the proposed variance request is contrary to the public interest, and is not consistent with the intent of the city's ordinances, since an approval would not be consistent with fair and equitable treatment for other members of our community. Two, that the proposed variance would serve as a special privilege and is not justified based on the special condition, any special conditions of the property, such as lot shape, elevation, or topography. Staff believe there are no mitigating circumstances. The lot is an average-sized corner parcel immersed in a residential neighborhood, and it does have a relatively level rear yard with just enough slope to carry stormwater away from the house. Three, a strict and literal interpretation of the code requires any detached structure larger than 120 square feet to match the house. In the variance application, 3C, and I don't know if you had a chance to read through that, it asks about hardship, and the Coyle's have indicated that it's going to be very costly to replace that roof. And we sympathize with that, but financial hardship is not a grounds for a variance, and it does say in that, in the zoning ordinance expressly lists that on 3C. The last finding of fact, staff believe the request is a self-opposed hardship since the shed was built to be installed at a different location where local jurisdiction may have had other regulations not permitted in the city of Janesville. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
What was wrong with the slab? So they poured a slab before?
They poured the slab, I mean, we took a look at it, and it wasn't quite ready. They didn't have enough dugout around the perimeter, and there were some bumps in it that still needed to be flattened out. You know, we think we'll get, staff is going to handle that. If this, something moves forward so that they can put a structure there, we're going to, you know, work with them to try to have them show us that they completed the work and did what they were supposed to.
So it wasn't poured when you were there, you're saying?
It wasn't poured. The inspector that was out there failed it because the perimeter was supposed to be dug out 12 inches deep, and it wasn't enough in some areas. So it needed a little more prep work, and I don't think, I don't think the concrete got poured that day. I think, I'm not sure exactly what day it was, but we do know it got completed because you can see it in the photo.
Is there any exceptions in Janesville's past that would, any exceptions in Janesville's past for something like this? Or has it been fairly consistent within ZBA's history that this has been?
If, if, if a case can show mitigating circumstance, then, you know, it could come before the board with our recommendation to approve. I can give you just a couple of examples. We did have one, and this was, this was for a different reason, but people were building a garage, and they were going to match the siding to the house, or I don't remember the exact circumstances, but they were given a year to make the change. And that went through the variance process, and I know they followed through. And then, it was just a few months ago that you looked at one on River Street, and that one had a lot of mitigating circumstances. I mean, it was, the lot was on the river, it was four acres, it rolled, the topography rolled all over the place. You couldn't even see the house from the street, and the garage was also screened from view by, they had a fence out front, and also a lot of trees. It was pretty heavily wooded. So none of those circumstances exist here.
Thank you.
One question, you don't want it visible, so if they put it in the back corner and the plant trees that covers it, would it still be, it's not visible to the street at that point?
It's, it's our belief that that building is still going to be very visible from the street, from the side street. You can look in the picture up there, it's next to the swing set, it's going to be taller than the swing set. I don't know if you had a chance to drive by it, but that photo was taken from the street.
Pretty difficult to hide a building of that size on a regular sized lot.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's 336 square feet, so it's not, it's not like your typical little shed. It's, it's more like a one-car garage size.
So, other than the siding and the roofing that needs to match, if they do that, then they would be okay with it, right?
Yes, and that's the way we set it up originally, giving them some time to switch it out.
How closely does it need, do we typically require it to match?
Well, I mean, the siding-
Like, so this one has vertical siding, would that be okay if the siding was the same color?
We would be okay with that, yes. We would say that that's, if they get the color the same as the house, we're not going to, you know, I mean, there's a lot of buildings like this that are, that come in different colors, and as long as they can get it to fairly match, we're happy with that.
So the concrete slab that was poured, is it the city's recommendation that they rip the concrete out and do it again?
I would say we're not looking to do that. We're, we want to work with these individuals. You know, I don't, we don't know who the contractor was. The contractor was not on site the day that the inspector was out there, but we're going to resolve that. We're not advocating for ripping it out at this point in time.
And is it your view that the size is not a question, it is simply just the siding and the roof material?
It's the exterior materials being compatible with the house.
Okay, thank you.
And I may have missed it, did we say there was a problem with replacing the materials on the roof?
It's, it's high-end materials, and it's going to be costly for them to replace with something that they feel is inferior material. And so, you know, we, we understand that, sympathize with it, but it's still, you know, it was a shed that was supposed to be, while it was placed on their former home, I assumed that that jurisdiction probably has different rules than we knew. But we want to, you know, we want to treat everybody across the city evenly and fairly.
What is the cost that they're expecting? What's the price that would, it would cost them?
Well, it's, it's in their application, but I don't have that in front of me. I know it's like, I don't know, $4,000? I don't know. You could ask them, they're here this evening, I believe they're here this evening, so.
I would comment about the thickened edge slab. These sheds aren't designed for a thickened edge slab. They have skids underneath, they're not, the thickened edge is pointless on this. If it was, if you're making them do a thickened edge for a garage, the structure of the garage sits on the thickened edge for support. These runners run right down the middle, it's so that the thickened edge is pointless for one of these buildings, is what I'm getting at.
I believe they have to attach it down somehow, so I'm not sure how they're going to do that.
They have to take the skids off the bottom, though?
No, yes, you are correct. Pre-built structures such as this is built on skids which is distributed evenly throughout the slab. The thickened edge, the thickened edge is by ordinance, required by ordinance. We don't have a way administratively, or staff cannot differentiate whether it has runners and an existing floor system, or it's stick built on the slab with the concrete slab as the floor itself. Therefore, we have always, or we have unilaterally required the thickened edge slab around the perimeter, just because that's, the ordinance states it, and we just don't have a go-around without going through an ordinance change and stating that if it's a pre-built structure, so forth. But the requirement for anything over 120 square feet unilaterally is, needs to be on a slab, and our ordinance states that it needs to be thickened edge.
Do the previous speaker who was requesting the cost, the appellate, or the Coyle's are claiming that this building is $25,000 to $30,000, and state that replacing the roof would likely cost 1/3 to 1/2 its value.
I'd just like to mention that justification for a variance cannot be for financial reasons.
Correct.
Any additional questions for Vicki? At this time, we will open it up for the public hearing. For Coyle's, you're welcome to come up and speak. When you come up to the podium, please state your name and your address.
I'm James Coyle, or Jimmy Coyle, 1418 North Wuthering Hills. And the building is only two years old, so the logic of ripping off a new metal roof to match the house roof, which was, we were told when we bought it, was replaced in 2019. So either way, we're replacing, and I understand the fiscal thing, but fiscal responsibility is, was always hammered into me, and I think any city ordinance that would say rip off just for the heck of it to match doesn't make logical sense, since it is just a two-year-old building. It's not like it's a dilapidated building, it's a high-quality Amish-built building that actually adds value, does not decrease value. Like I had said before, if I need to paint it, I will gladly paint it. It's just that, there's no logical reason, under the sun, to have to replace a metal roof with something far less compatible, a less structure, which might actually damage the building. So that was why we were requesting the variance. Now granted, when time comes that we need to replace, yes, when that comes, we'll gladly match, but right off the bat, it's, that was why we were requesting the variance, because we looked into what it would cost either way to replace, you know, we're talking who knows how much to replace that size of a house into metal, and to put it there. And, you know, like I said, we are just doing a building that enhances, it doesn't decrease. I'm actually a minister, and I have meetings, and one of the things that room, because it's, I mean, it is a shed, but it is got heating and air, so it's just a place that I can actually have a meeting, a Zoom meeting, with congregants if I need to. That's what I can tell you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Coyle, also at 1418 North Wuthering Hills. A couple of things I wanted to add. I'm looking for work, hoping to find something that's, if not local in Janesville, then remote, and that would give me office space that I don't have currently. It is finished inside, it doesn't have water, but it is heated, cooled, finished, lighting, electric, electric box, exterior lighting, and it's all neutral colors, is another thing that hasn't been stated. When we bought it, the house that we had was blonde brick, so it was bought to match that, but it's all very neutral, there's no loud anything on it. And if you can kind of look at the vertical, the picture that was taken that can see the corner, that's, it's just a corner that you would see. The windows are finished, and they have, what is it, finishing around them, so they're all cased and pretty, and it's quite aesthetic, actually, from that front corner that you'll see. But it's mostly tucked behind a two-story house, and 50, 60, 70-foot, two, two 70-foot pine trees in front of it that block, what will block more than half of the front. So it's really not out there for the world to see. You can see a little bit of it. Also, in the neighborhood, when we were shopping for homes, we wanted, we were, we bought a house, a lot, dependent on the fact that we could get the building to it, to the backyard, and it would fit on the lot. So that was part of our idea in buying here in Janesville. Did not know of the ordinance at the time. Also, in the neighborhood, where we got the idea that we could coordinate, and not matchy-match, that we could coordinate, there is a similar structure larger than ours in the neighborhood that has, I think, barn doors, and it's a whole, almost a whole lot, fills a whole lot, and it's coordinated to the home, doesn't match it. So we thought we could make ours coordinate. Additionally, from our backyard, we're on a corner, so we have the house behind us, the house catty-corner, and the house next to us, all have sheds, none of which are large, but none of which match in any way, shape, or form the current house. Every one of them is like potpourri colors. So I didn't think that many people would have, I mean, and they're like red, and blue, and orange, I think like there's lots of colors happening. So that's what we see from our backyard currently. Additionally, we have four boys, and would like to be a place we could welcome kids to hang out in the winter months. There's many of them where you can't play outside, we've got a playground that we invite neighborhood kids to come play on. So that would be, we would have a camera out there with pan view and sound and all of that, and it would be a space where kids could be, that wouldn't be loud in my house, in my living room. So it's kind of like a usable space for that. It's additional storage. Again, with six people in a four-bedroom house, we're a little cramped, it's got half of a basement as storage, so this building brings us extra storage. So it means a lot to us, to our family. The kids are all on board for it, the youngest are here. But yeah, we are highly invested in bringing this building to our house. We bought it to add value to our home the first time, so we hope it could do the same here.
Okay, Mr. Secretary, do you, could you read any written comments that have been submitted for the public hearing into the record?
I certainly can. We have two emails that were received recently or after publication here. Email number one, hello, Mr. Yunker, my name is David Stalvo, I reside at 4212 Prairie Fox Drive, I share a property line with the address at 1418 North Wuthering Hills Drive, which is currently seeking a variance request to construct a 336-square-foot detached structure. I am writing to formally express several concerns regarding this proposal. My concerns are as follows. Number one, aesthetic and property value impact, the plans indicate that the building materials of the proposed structure do not align with those of the main residents. Given the structure's size, 330 square, 336 square feet, and its visibility from the street, this discrepancy raises concerns about the potential negative aesthetic impact on the surrounding properties, including my own, and its commensurate effect on long-term property values. Concern number two, precedent for future zoning, I am concerned about the future, or about the precedent that granting this specific variance may establish for future zoning requests within the neighborhood. Allowing a variance of this nature could potentially lead to an increase in subsequent similar requests, which in the long term may negatively affect the established character and overall livability of the neighborhood. Number three, ambiguity of intended use. The proposed structure's intended purpose remains unclear. I must express a serious concern that the structure could be utilized as a habitable living space, such as a short-term rental or similar tiny house. This type of usage could introduce adverse effects, including increased noise disturbances, trash, and potential safety concerns, all of which would directly impact the quality of life on my adjacent property. Email number two comes from Dale and Lisa Kimball of 4213 Prairie Fox Drive. Zoning Board of Janesville, this email is in response to the variance request by Jennifer and James Coyle. After much thought and consideration, I must say that I'm not in favor of granting the variance. My wife and I have lived in many communities in various states over the years, and have been, have seen firsthand what happens to neighborhoods that don't follow zoning regulation or provide routine variances. Our current home is our permanent retire home, and we would like to see the existing standards be upheld. If this variance is granted, then more are sure to follow because the precedents will have been set. This is a building three times larger than the average backyard shed in our neighborhood, and will not match the existing home. The Coyle's home is a corner lot with no fence to even begin to limit the visibility of the structure. Excuse me. While we respect your decision, we only ask that you consider this request as if it was going in right next door to your home. That is all I have.
Okay. Okay. You look like you had a response, sir.
I just have one statement to make, because the letter that went out, we got a copy of, and it was very ambiguous. I don't think it fairly explained to anyone or anything what we were wanting and what it was for. So, like, the fact that somebody thinks we're going to create a livable space is not fair, because that was not at all the use of it. So I just wanted to say how I don't appreciate how it was written up and sent out. It did not clearly state our purpose for it, which we had kind of said. So I think if there's a precedence for any more letters sent out to, from the board, that maybe it's spelled out a little bit clear, because I don't think maybe we would have gotten at least one of those responses. Thank you.
Can I add?
Absolutely.
Can we go to the side of the building itself? Probably that, but I don't want to.
Is that?
Thank you. So this does look residential, that's part of its intention, but it is a storage building. It's a finished storage building that will have room for some tables and chairs, and a desk, if I get it. But that window is a two-pane, so it looks, I don't know, it looks residential to me. But in looking at the backyard, that slight corner, you would see the entry door that looks like a home. It's really meant for people and things. It's not meant for renting out, or bringing in any additional people to the property other than guests at our home. Any other questions? Was that all that was brought up?
There was, there's no plumbing to the building.
Nope, no plumbing.
No, never happened and never will be.
It does have the skids and it sits on the ground at its current position. The builder is Martin Buildings. I don't know if you're familiar. Yeah.
It only has a Mr. Cool Heating and Air system, but that was because I have 400,000 baseball cards that I'm waiting to move into there and I need a spot that's got
Climate control.
Climate control.
And the golf balls will go bad in this cold.
That's the only door is the front?
Yeah, that's the only door. There's a small window like this.
Octagonal window.
So the back looks like that, but flat, nothing. It's just, except for a small window, kind of octagonal at the very top, just to help bring light in. That's it.
And there's two of the single panes, so that's a double pane. There's two single panes on each side.
On each side. That's it.
So it looks very homie. My, my backyard neighbor, the person that shares the property line on Prairie Fox, out of my bedroom window right now, I watch him grilling on his back porch, just because the way his six-foot fence is and my house sits. There's a big tree, but it's in the corner and his home is here. And I look at his chimney 100% of the time and his six-foot fence 100% of the time, and then him on his raised porch where he's doing all of his living. So honestly, for me to have this structure there, I would prefer to see a neutral tan side and brown-sided structure than to watch him on his back porch. Just saying. Out of my bedroom window, it's weird.
And the only other thing I would say is you'd have to be driving 10 miles an hour to actually get the view you actually see from that photo because of how.
Have to stop and really look.
Yeah, you'd have to stop and look and nobody driving through their ghost 10 miles an hour and goes that slow.
No, they're not. Oh, lastly, if there were questions about the concrete before, we added a third lane to the driveway. This is good to talk about. So we were adding a third lane to the driveway and extended off of the garage even, an extra lane for a trailer and a third vehicle that we have. And we were doing that at the same time as this lab in the backyard. So we told them to prioritize the third lane because we really needed that done first. So that's where the iffy lab structure was happening because we told them, take that bedrock over here and use it over here first. Mr. King, Mike, maybe?
Mike.
King did the, did the concrete work and we cannot add to our structures at all toward Prairie Fox. So that's why we were going, looking at behind to get additional storage on our property.
I have a question. So for the third lane in the driveway, that was permitted, approved, everything went fine?
No permits required for driveways.
Thank you. Never mind. Okay. Any additional questions from the board? Okay. Before I close this public hearing, is there anyone else present that wishes to speak? Ask this three times. One more. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak?
I have one more question.
Okay.
On the, on the ordinance that said hardship cannot be a reason, does it differentiate between financial stewardship or financial hardship, or is it just hardship? Because my issue is with the stewardship side.
Yeah.
To put a lower quality roof on a, to take a metal roof, higher quality roof off and spend that much money to put a lower quality roof on is where I really had a problem.
No, it doesn't differentiate, but I.
No, it's not hardship. We're not claiming hardship. It's stewardship.
At all.
Thank you. Okay, last time. Is there anyone else present that wishes to speak? Okay.
For your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing and hearing none, I am going to close the public hearing portion. And open it up for discussion with us. Any thoughts, gentlemen?
Seems to me that the big issue is the colors. I've always had an issue with the, that you can't put steel on a shed or a garage because it doesn't match the house. And my issue has always been this exact thing is you might not need a roof on your house yet, but you want to put a garage up and you want to put a steel roof on it. So the color thing, I can kind of understand from the city's point of view. So you paint it. You can paint the roof too. Black would match a gray roof, shingle roof. But that's just my two cents.
I think they mentioned that they're open to painting the thing to match. So I think it, the roof is not a, nobody's going to climb on top of a two-story building to see the type of roof it has got. So I think if it painted, it should be fine. Paint it close to matching a roof.
I, I would think, yeah, you're not going to paint it to look like shingles, but I, I don't know if you can paint the roof to look like the shutters and then it would have the same, it'd have the same two, two-tone colors.
I, I think that painting it is a simple solution that meets the need of, of the ordinance, meets the need of the appellant. And in 10 years, when the house needs a new roof at that point, then that can go metal and be upgraded to this two-year-old roof. And I don't know if we have the ability to build that into our approval, but when the roof is replaced, they'd be matching at that point. I, I mean, I think the ordinance is putting an undue hardship in itself, I think.
Discussion on this?
Mr. Secretary?
Yes.
If the roof were painted to match, would that satisfy the city's, the city's point of view?
In my opinion, no, it would not. The ordinance is very clear that they need to be of similar materials. The vertical siding, vertical plywood siding that the structure has can be painted with trim colors similar to the house could be, and we have allowed that in the past. However, there's many instances where people have come to us with wanting a metal corrugated metal roof of the type that, that is on this particular structure. And we have denied that a bit, that, those requests simply because the ordinance is very clear that the, the materials shall meet or be similar to those on the primary structure. We, again, we've, we, we get these requests frequently and in many cases, we've, people have had to alter this construction, alter the design of their shed of where they want to go. Further, if the shed were up to 120 square feet, we don't, we don't differentiate between colors, material, it's 120, correct, Vicki? We don't differentiate between materials, things like that. Once they exceed, we consider that an accessory structure, not just a shed. This is more of an accessory structure. And the, the ordinance is very clear to, to respect and to, to keep and maintain the aesthetic integrity of the neighborhoods. So the answer to your question is corrugated metal roofing versus shingles is a, is a vast difference, painted or not. And from a staff standpoint, my, my opinion or my, my terminate or my, my determination on it is no, that would not be allowed.
I have a follow-up question to that. In the new ordinance rewrite, is the ordinance just as clear or are there changes? What would this look like under that rewrite?
The new ordinance rewrite, my understanding is this, this requirement will remain intact. It will not be altered. So keep in mind by, by, if we, if this, if this variance is granted, it will open the door for future variances of similar nature. And from a staff standpoint, it's our duty, it's our job to protect the integrity of the neighborhoods and to follow the ordinances. Yes, can, does this board have the ability to, to grant a variance? Absolutely. Well, the, the thing that we have to look at is when we do so, then we will have future cases and we will have people referring back to why did I get, why didn't and, and things like that. So I just caution you on, on your decision-making as to what we're looking at down the road in the future. So to answer, your question is, yes, the new zoning ordinance will maintain the same standards as far as the matching, matching materials.
I think an important thing to note here, if the board were to issue a variance, we would still need to up here state how it meets the four findings of fact listed here. And my understanding, and Vicki or Jake can correct me on this, like these four findings of fact, like the, not because of a self-imposed hardship, practical difficulty, all this stuff, that is not created by ordinance. That statute, correct? That is state law. So in order to issue the variance, we would have to state up here how it meets all of these standards. And I mean, personally, in my, in my view, as far as like, number four, as far as like self-imposed hardship, like in my view, I mean, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, the financial side of it, which can't really consider. But as far as like self-imposed hardship, I mean, if finances were a concern, I mean, I've never moved a 300-foot building from Illinois, but that doesn't come cheap either. And I know it's a, you know, nice building hooked up with electricity and all that stuff, but I, in my view, I don't see how it's more practical for them to move it as opposed to construct another structure that would be compliant, basically. And I, in my view, that would sort of be a self-imposed hardship, in my opinion.
Well, it's going to be way more to build a building, but.
In this case, you're trying to downgrade the building than try to keep it, keep the value of the building. So I, I think it's, from a financial standpoint of view, expecting to change a good roof is hardship on its own.
Which, and which we cannot consider financial hardships.
But I, I mean, I think financial hardship and common sense are important considerations in this. Downgrading the materials on a building is a common sense hardship that, that doesn't make sense. You don't want to go from a higher quality of a material to a lower because it's pretty. You want to make sure that it's going to do the job for the duration of that building and serve the intent and purpose that it was built for. And this is only 14 feet wide. The cost of moving that from Illinois to Wisconsin will be not expensive. I'd go on a hot shot. But so, I mean, I think these are things that we have to really think about. I am less concerned with setting a precedent. I mean, we want to be intentional about the residents of Janesville, what we're allowing and what we're not allowing for structures. I think painting this, is, is, I have a clarifying question. Can, is your house blue or gray? Okay. I mean, I think painting this building, the roof is, in my opinion, not anything I've ever paid attention to. And driving past any house in Janesville at any point in time is the roof on the garage or a shed in the backyard. And paying attention to this visible 14 feet that they'll be able to see from the road compared to 120-foot shed, that might be blue, orange, purple, or green. That wouldn't matter. So I think the city and this ordinance is putting an undue hardship and asking them to change the roofing material when neighbors are allowed with the same visible amount.
While, while I understand your perspective and I, I could agree to, if it was a lower or if it was a smaller area, 100, 136 square feet, 150 square feet, I think that 336 square feet is, it would be a special privilege, especially in light of, especially in light of all of the many that get denied consistently. My, my chief concern is not a situation like this where, you know, two-year-old metal roof and I know a thing or I know what it's like to have to tear down a shed you built, a shed you built and just put something fresh on. I had to do that as a teen with, with my father. I, that was hard. But the, the precedent that that would open up outweighs the, outweighs what the exemption would be here.
I think instead of, we're talking about the precedence, maybe that is a good thing, that the ordinance will look at it and change it in the next go-around. So why not set a precedent?
That would be a question for city council, not for this.
No, we, it's an art thing that they're saying, don't do it because it'll set a precedent. But if we do it because it is good, it's not hurting and has common sense to it, let the city council decide whether it is a precedence or not. We should not be doing it in a negative way because it might or might not be a precedent.
If we would grant the exemption by itself, that would set the precedent. And if the city council would like us or would like to revisit this, that is their prerogative. But as it is, the, the zoning code both now and in the future would cap it at 120 square feet where, where city staff would not have to enforce it.
And this is where I respectfully disagree with your view on this, where someone could have a hot pink 120-foot shed completely visible to everybody driving by and that would meet the ordinance. But we're saying this, where again, I want to reiterate, only 14 feet are going to be visible from the road. It's going to be painted to match. I would include that in the variance. I don't think it's a financial hardship. I think it's just, again, a common sense that we're, we're asking just for someone to ruin a wonderfully functional building that has a functional roof that is safe and going to do its job just so that way, again, I, I come back to the fact that it's pretty. I personally don't mind setting a precedent. When something needs to change, a precedent is how things are changed. And if that goes back to the city council, then for extras, I personally am very comfortable with that. And similarly, when we approved another garage that was a little bit larger, setting a precedent, I don't think is something I am afraid of. If it's, if it needs to be changed, it needs to be changed.
I think my concern right now is, I would say I disagree with the ordinance, but I'm not sure if it's the authority of this board to essentially push for a change to the ordinance. How would, how would these ordinances usually be changed?
We're not trying to change an ordinance. We're just.
Yeah, but we're talking, we're.
And then that's the city council's job to decide whether they do want to do it or not.
Yes, but we're, we're, one of the comments that was made is that we were essentially setting a precedent and hoping that it changes. And I'm not sure if that's normally a thing that would happen.
My understanding, the ordinance has only changed every, what, 20 years when they rewrite it, which is the process they're going through right now. Is that accurate?
Somewhat. Ordinances, the, the, the current zoning code ordinance is roughly 40 years old. We are undergoing the new rewrite, which we anticipate to be finalized first quarter of 2026, if all goes well. Keeping in mind the, the ordinances, individual ordinance can be changed through the city council process. But in order to do that, we would have to, to propose the, the correct, the, the correct writings or the direction that you'd like, you would like to recommend. It would be open to a public hearing and then it would go to the city council for approval. That being said, you know, going back to corrugated metal roofing versus shingles and, and so forth, that's entirely, we're, again, from the staff standpoint, we're following the ordinance because that's what we have to follow. I would like to further clarify that if the board is considering granting this variance, the board needs to come up and justify through the four findings of facts, the four, you know, meeting those four findings of facts in order to grant the variance. As it states on top, the ZBA rules of. As it states on top, the ZBA rules of procedure include the following criteria, all of which must be satisfied in order for the ZBA to grant a variance. In other words, if you're choosing to go that route, we need to look at each individual findings of fact and make a determin, an answer to those as to how you believe that the granting of the variance would fall, would satisfy these four findings of fact.
All right. I, I will add that I do agree that it is kind of up for the, the City Council to decide the ordinances, but, and I don't think they would want to completely open it up to whatever people want. So, the, this, I feel like is kind of one of those edge cases, that's like, if, if they are willing to paint it to, you know, if not perfectly, it'd be the exact same materials and everything, they're, they're making a pretty strong effort to make it fit in, which I think would qualify the first one, that it's not contrary to public interest. If they do, I, I could see that it is contrary to public interest slightly, that it is an off-color. So if they do paint it to match, I think it qualifies that one. And then, number two, is it a special privilege? Again, perhaps, but if, if we would be willing to do this for anyone else, then it's not. And then, number three, yeah, I, I mean, I think it is making a difficulty for them that this is, yeah, number three, strict literal interpretation of the ordinance will result in a practical difficulty and unnecessary hardship. That one perhaps a bit more questionable? I don't know if anyone else has any, anything else to add?
They don't think you could debate that it's a hardship to, just the actual action of replacing the roof on that from metal to shingles, it was originally built with Would that risk damaging the structural integrity of the roof? Just, I'm not really sure.
I mean, it would degrade the quality, I think that's not in question, going from metal to shingle.
Yeah.
And I think as we go back to these finding of facts, looking at number, I mean, I think we've discussed all of them, and I go back to number two, not serving as a special privilege and being justified based on special conditions of the property, we're not, we're not bringing into account these trees, right? If you're looking at Prairie Fox Drive and you're looking into where this is going to be placed, you can see the shadows on Exhibit A of where these trees are, where they're placed, the height of those trees. I, I, I don't think that this is a special privilege because that, you know, that leads into the way that backyard is described, it's justified based on those special conditions. Those trees are going to hide that roof material where it wouldn't be an eyesore specifically, which I, I think is what we keep coming back to. The only things in question with this ordinance are aesthetic.
I mean, I would argue, I mean, based on the picture, I mean, I feel like I can see quite a bit of the slab there. Obviously, a building built on top of it is going to be more visible than just the slab, so I don't think really the trees obscure it enough where you could say that it's not visible, to be honest.
Now, what are you considering, the fact that somebody's going to actually stand at that location and look at it for a certain amount of time, and most of the people are going to be just driving past? It doesn't, I mean, you could have the whole backyard visible, but the angle at which the picture is taken and stuff, you're actually standing there and taking the picture.
And if it was 14 feet wide and only eight feet deep or seven feet deep, it could be striped rainbow painted, and that would not come in front of us, so the same amount would be visible from the roadway. I think the ordinance is putting a, a hardship, an unnecessary hardship on the property owner, in my opinion.
Even, or if I were to concede findings of fact, one, two, and three, that this would, that this exemption would be qualified, I, I struggle to see the argument for number four. This, this was not purchased with the, with the juris, with the jurisdictional rules of Janesville's fine, because they weren't living at the place, or they weren't living in the city at the time. They would have to tow it, or they would have to transport it up here and then install it. To me, each of those points is, each of those points is a strike against the idea that this would not be a self-imposed hardship.
I would assume that that whole building has already been moved to Janesville, so it's already been paid for and brought here, so it's going to cost them more to get rid of it.
No, it's not.
Still their Illinois property.
No. Is, is the thing currently in this location?
No, it is in Ashley, Illinois, which is four hours away.
Come back up to the podium, please. Thank you.
Jennifer Coyle, 1418 North Wuthering Hills. It is still at our former residence and needs to be moved off of that property, so we will be paying to move it, just matters where, we'd like to bring it to our home.
Jimmy Coyle, 1418 North Wuthering Hills. And even if we got another Martin building, it would still be delivered the same way, they're all built the same, where they're brought in on a flatbed trailer, they're dropped off and driven onto the property, so either way, it's, there's an install of it to be set there. But, yeah, it's four hours away.
So at this time, it's sitting on your old property, but it'll still cost you money to get rid of it also.
And we have to find a buyer. We're gonna, we can't just absorb the cost of building another one. So we would have to sell it before we could move forward with a new one, you know, so like, starting over from scratch, there's hindrances there.
Do we have any other questions or any other discussion for these days?
I mean, I think, going back to the finding of facts, findings of fact here, I mean, with number one here, as far as whether or not it's contrary to the public interest, I mean, I can't think of a single instance where we've had more than one letter from someone in the area, someone in the neighborhood write in, opposed to something, where it's then gotten approved. And then, in order to approve a variance, we would have to say that it's not contrary to the public interest when the people in the neighborhood are opposed to it, and I don't think I could bring myself to...
But there's restrictions that would be, there's restrictions that would be applied to it. We're not saying you can dump this building there as it sits. So, and, as Jimmy said, the letter was very vague, I didn't read the letter, but I can imagine what it was.
I mean, we can't know for sure what these people had seen before they had written these emails. I mean, at the time that the agenda was sent out, they hadn't been received yet, correct? And at that point, all these images that we're seeing were up on the city website. I can't speak for Janesville, but, you know, for my own municipality, I must, that I work for, I mean, I'm assuming that it would say on the letter where these can be found on the website, I mean...
Yeah, they don't get posted to the website until the complete package and report is put together with the presentation. So what the, what the neighborhood gets, everybody within, that owns property within 400 feet of this property gets the, the legal notice, and it basically gives, you know, the facts. It doesn't say whether staff is opposed or not, it's just, you know, this is what they're asking for. Is, is that something you could share with us? Could you email that to us so we can see what that letter says? It's the first paragraph in every report. And the letter just says, you know, it invites the neighbors to come here if they'd like or to... Okay, so it's literally the variance request is what is sent? Yes, and the letter states that they, that the public is, can respond by email, or they can come to the meeting. And so, these two individuals chose email. Okay. I mean, realizing that, that that's all that was sent, I mean, I think that's very vague, that really definitely goes into this could be a tiny house, this could be a circus building, right? I mean, it, it leaves so much up to interpretation, so I personally feel that we can make an argument for every one of these four findings of fact.
We've already made the argument on the four parts of it.
I did too.
And just a, I guess a clarification point of order. So i- if we are going to adjust their variance to say that they are going to repaint things, would they have to withdraw this and reapply and come back next month? Or we could do that here?
No, we can approve it with that recommendation or with that mandate, excuse me, that they paint it, so that way the color matches their main dwelling. Yeah, and, and then the city would basically follow up on that to make sure they complied.
So the big hangup is the roof, period?
Yes.
It's been agreed that it can be painted, correct? The, the walls?
Yep.
It's the steel versus the shingles. That's, that's it. Everything else is good to go.
Fine.
They could tear that roof off and put a shingled roof on, and it would be fine.
Yep. Which I think that in itself, again, I don't think it's a financial hardship, I think it's a, it's just a wasteful hardship. It's, that goes back to common sense. We have any other discussion, or do I potentially have a motion, or...
I need to read the first paragraph, right?
Yes.
Based on the four findings of facts listed in the staff report, I make a motion to accept the requested variance for COJ zoning ordinance section, whatever, in order to place the pre-built 336-square-feet detached surf structure on the property of 1418 North Wuthering Hills Drive, we find the structure does meet all the findings of fact and is not, and is compatible with the house on the property when painted right. An approval would be fair and equal administrator of the code for other members of the community.
I'll second that motion.
For clarity, can we...
No, just the walls.
Just the walls?
I thought...
For clarity, can we, can we reestablish the four findings of fact based on, on your, your discretion, your choosing?
I'll let him, he did the, up the things better than I do, so I'll just...
Well, I guess in my understanding, they were going to paint the roof as well, but to match like the shutters color. Would, would everyone agree that that would be?
Yes.
Because it's brown, and that might just look worse. So, the, match the siding color, and then match the roof to the shingles color?
Shutters color.
Or shutters, sorry, yes. So, that would, the proposed variance request is not contrary to public interest, is consistent with the intent of the city's ordinance, and will not compromise public safety and welfare. I think they're, they're making a very strong effort, it still fits with, it still matches their house, though it's not the exact same material, so I still think it fits with the intent of the ordinance. That the proposed variance will not serve as a special privilege and is justified based on special conditions on the property, which are not shared by other properties. So here, we, we are, I guess, creating new precedent, but I think it's still a pretty special case that they, as long as there's, you know, strong efforts made to match the color pattern of the, the building, some exceptions can be made. I guess would be the precedence going forward, and we would grant that to, I would grant the same thing to anyone going forward. Strict literal interpretation of the ordinance will result in practical difficulty and unnecessary hardship for the owner. Again, we would be asking them to degrade their roof by going from a sturdy metal to asphalt shingles. And then, the variance is not requested because of a self-imposed hardship. This one, I, I mean, I, I don't think, I guess I, I don't think people moving into Janesville can be expected to read through our whole ordinance code, so they, they certainly didn't intend to break any rules or do anything wrong.
I think the variance is requested because they don't want to go to a subpar roofing material on a, on a shed that is perfectly fine, and then you're going to degrade it is why the variance is requested.
So that, that would be my summary for how it meets the four criteria.
I personally agree, I still hold to my seconding of that motion.
For clarity, does, so the motion includes painting both the siding and the roof?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Secretary, are we ready to vote?
We are. I will do a roll call vote. Please, when you hear your name, please signify your intentions. Mr. Ballouer?
Approved.
Mr. Bennett?
Nay.
Mr. Feeny?
Nay.
Mr. Cruiser?
Yes.
Ms. Harlow?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
I have four in favor, three opposed. Motion carries.
I believe that was two opposed.
I thought I had three. Oh, I'm sorry, I, my, my bad. It is five, it is five-two. Pardon me.
We are.
Thank you, Vicki. That would be Mr. Hammond, Mr. Ryan, our alternates, is that correct? Therefore, we have a voting party of five, which puts us at three to two, motion still carries. Thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, give us a second for a little, little paperwork procedural, and we'll move on to our second case of the evening.
I'm still sorry to interrupt you. Go back to this one question. They would actually prefer to do the roof black rather than matching the navy blue on the house?
The shutters are black, that's...
I believe that's what they said.
They're navy blue.
It's, yeah, the shading of the picture.
Pretty close to black.
So just want to clarify if the board is okay with black? Yes? Okay.
Mr. Secretary, we are ready for our next case.
All right. Variance request number two, we have, this evening, we have Kristin and Scott Armstrong, owners of 827 East Court Street, are requesting a variance from zoning ordinance section 42-362 Perrin 6 in order to construct a new detached garage on the property. The code allows such structures to be no greater than 750 square feet in area, and the proposed garage is 864 square feet.
So this is a case that the board has reviewed many times and approved many times. So this is a case that the board has reviewed many times and approved many times. The petitioners are asking, asking to construct a garage that combines the allowable areas for a garage and a shed. So we're talking about a 750 plus 120, and then they would not have a shed on the property. The new zoning code will allow this to occur administratively by staff in the future, so this type of variance is going to stop coming to you eventually. At least that's what we're predicting at this point. The Armstrongs purchased the subject property in June of this year. It is located in the Courthouse Hill Historic District. The house is a two-story brick building, and the existing garage is in poor condition. The Armstrongs would like to replace it with a larger version. The new garage is beautifully designed to be compatible with the house, including a brick facade, tall windows with precast accents, and a hip-style roof. This is the side view of the property from Marshall Place. You can see the existing garage on the right. This would be demolished to make room for the new garage. It'll be a bit of a tight fit, but a surveyor has been hired to ensure that minimum setbacks will be met. The new garage would be a three-car with an overall height of 19 foot, 2 inches. The code generally allows a garage to be 14 feet in height, but there is a provision which allows the building director to approve historic district garages up to 21 feet when the design is compatible with the house and neighborhood. The proposed height has already been approved. Additionally, the garage as a whole has been approved by the Historic Commission for a certificate of appropriateness. The garage is proposed to be 32 feet wide by 27 feet deep for a total of 864 square feet. Staff is recommending approval of the request, subject to two conditions. One, that they're not going to be able to have another detached structure on the property. And two, the proposed detached structure shall be constructed and placed on the property in substantial compliance with Exhibits D, E, and F. So D was their building plan, still their building plan, and then F is the site plan that shows where it's going to be fit on the lot. And based on the four findings of fact found in the staff report, that the proposed variance request is not contrary to the public interest, is consistent with intent of city ordinances, it will not compromise public safety and welfare. The new garage is designed to include characteristics present, characteristics present on the house, and the Janesville Historic Commission has found the design to be historically compatible with the neighborhood. The garage would not compromise public safety and welfare since it would be placed in the same approximate location as the existing garage. I should mention, too, that in the, the report, we did have a neighbor respond in, and wanted to approve, you know, they're, they're in favor of the request. Two, staff believe the proposed variance does not serve as a special privilege and is justified since the lot is irregularly shaped and located on a corner street intersection within the Courthouse Hill Historic District. Three, a strict and literal interpretation of the code would allow the applicants to have two detached structures, a shed of 120 square feet and a garage of 750 square feet. Presently, the code does not allow those two areas to be combined for one structure. However, staff will be able to approve this administratively in the future under the new zoning ordinance rewrite. And lastly, number four, the variance is not requested because of a self-imposed hardship, since the house and garage were originally constructed in 1915 in the existing configuration on the lot. The garage is in poor condition and needs to be replaced. The petitioners are making a significant improvement to the property, and staff believe the construction of one, of one detached structure instead of two is based on sound design principles. Do you have any questions?
Anybody on the board with questions before we open the public portion?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Vicki. Okay, at this point, I will open up the public hearing if anybody wishes to speak. All right.
Always a good plan.
State your name and your address.
John Pyo, 825 East Court Street, directly on the other side of the retaining wall in the image there. And you're Rochelle Wallington, 825 East Court Street, right?
Yep.
And so we just wanted to welcome them to the neighborhood, because they just bought the place and everything.
We've been in the Courthouse Hill District for about three years, so we're also going through the same processes, so it's good to learn, and...
We just wanted to see how the variance meetings went, and...
Hopefully their project ends up on time and under budget, and welcome to the neighborhood.
You can kind of see us just in the background there. We're a little yellow.
Be in this exact same position when our permits go in, so...
All right. Thank you so much.
Kristin Armstrong of 827 East Court Street. I want to apologize that Scott is not present this evening. He's a physician at Metro Health and, or Mercy Health, and he's with the babies, and babies wait for no one, even zoning. So I apologize for his absence. We're very excited for this new project. I think a taller, heftier structure of garage will be more in fitting with the house. The house is quite imposing, as far as it's a big brick square. And the garage at this point does look a little bit minuscule comparatively. And I think a, a larger garage will look more in, like they go together better. And we're in full compliance with the historical district. We really want to comply with what they want. Our desire is to make it look as historical as possible, and that's what we're trying to do. So we've, we've done everything we can. We've worked with Vicki, and then we can move forward. Thank you.
All right, here comes the three times. Is anyone else present that wishes to speak? Is there anyone else present that wishes to speak? And is there anyone else present that wishes? I apologize. I'm out of order here. Mr. Secretary, could you please read any written comments that were submitted for the public hearing into the record?
There are none at this time.
All right. We're going to do the three thing one more time.
Sorry.
That's okay. Anyone present who wishes to speak? Anyone else present who wishes to speak? And is there anyone else present who wishes to speak? All right. Now we're, we're in compliance. Seeing none, the public hearing portion of this is closed. Committee, do we have any discussion? Okay.
What are the setbacks on the, it looks like it's on the driveway side. It's like right on the property line, and obviously those lines aren't exact, but put back a couple slides, I think.
It does specifically say...
That part must be grandfathered in, but it's coming away from the property line.
The existing building is encroaching on the setbacks, setbacks a little bit, so the new garage is going to be shifted, but it meets it, and it needs to be two feet from the drip edge of the building to the property line, both the rear and the side. And then it was going to be, I think, 11 feet from the house, so they're not going to have to worry about fire separation. Not that they'd have probably too much trouble between, you know, their house and a brick.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one, one question, slightly, slightly unrelated. I know we've got rules regarding like fences and stuff, but hedgerows, I don't think there's any rules on. Is that right? But if, if the owner could do me a favor, when you're backing out of your driveway, just look, see if someone is walking on the sidewalk, kid walking to school or anything. If you can't see them, talk with your neighbor, see about cutting that hedge back. That's, and that's not a, just a request. Thank you.
There, there actually is a regulation in the zoning ordinance for that, but it's, we don't chase people for it.
Yeah. Hedges grow. It's kind of tough to keep track of.
Sometimes we get neighbors who call and say, "I can't see."
Yeah.
That's just the right thing to do.
Yep. That's it for me.
Okay, if we have no more discussion, or any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Based on the four findings of fact listed in the staff report, I make a motion to approve the requested variance from City of Janesville zoning ordinance section 42-362 parent six in order to construct a new 864, six, 864 square foot, there we go, detached garage on the property, subject to the following conditions. No other detached accessory structure is permitted on the property, and the proposed detached garage shall be constructed and placed on the property in substantial compliance with the attached Exhibits D, E, and F.
I'll second. Reserve.
Well, Mr. Secretary, can you call a vote?
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll call, I'll call for a vote here. Please signify your intentions when I call your name. Mr. Ballour?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Feeny?
Aye.
Mr. Cruiser?
Aye.
Ms. Harlow?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote. Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Okay, at this point, I don't have any announcements. We are currently scheduled for our next meeting on December 23rd. There is a deadline of November 25th. So far, there have been no applications, so we may be in the clear. With that being said, we are going to adjourn this meeting at 7:21 PM. Thank you all.